All right, I'm calling the village board meeting to order for January 10. Roll call please.
Trustee Brodsky.
Here.
Trustee Doosie.
Here.
Trustee Brenner. Trustee Paul McCauley.
Here.
Trustee Harriman.
Here.
Trustee Calviter.
Here.
President Lang.
Here. United States of America and two republics, one nation, on a guide indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board and any issues, please observe the nine moment of three minutes. The village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly goes on the agenda. We have anybody?
We did not have anyone register for public comment.
We'll go to a report of village officer, village president, I have nothing for tonight, village vice president.
I have nothing tonight.
All right, other trustee reports. All right, village administrator.
I'm not, no reports this evening.
Okay, other reports. Not seen any, all right, we'll go to general business. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance, change of the emergency management director.
You want a presentation on this, Jay?
Um, I guess everybody, if you weren't here the last time, what Bill, when Bill and I were talking about job description for the village administrator, Bill made the suggestion that we might want to move emergency management director away from this position because most people who are in this position or study this or train for this don't get emergency management training and a lot of other places use the chief of police, I contacted Tony. He was in agreement, so what this is, is basically changing our ordinance to move emergency management director from the administrator position to the police, chief of police, you want to add anything to that?
No, just that, as you see in the ordinance that's provided in the packet here, the the language is in two different sections of the code, chapter 10 and chapter 12, and so those respective sections have been, are, will be amended.
All right, do I have a motion?
So.
Sorry.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Bill? Are we going to, are we going to pay the chief a little bit more for doing this because that was not in his original job description and we take that money even away from the administrator when we hire new administrators?
Well, there are two different things, but yes, we've said to the chief that we went and we talked about this with the subcommittee on benefits, this will be one of them and we'll have a discussion with the chief.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Judy?
Um, and I know the chief doesn't live here, but do you think in the future we would make this to be a position that has to live? Because does it say they have to live within a certain or be able to respond in a certain timeframe? If there was a catastrophe, you know, I like, I know we do, I didn't use to do that, I swear we used to do that. They had to be able to respond, we do for Kim, right? Kim has it, where he has to respond with this certain times.
Yeah, so I believe certain emergencies, there is a timeframe for which you can request of that. We'll have to double check with our attorney to make sure that that's something that can be implemented. I believe so, but again, I defer to the votes attorney.
My only thing is we, this, it's been with the administrator, we haven't had that, so.
No, no, and I like the police chief too also, but I don't know like if it would hurt if we said they had to respond with them like even if we said like six hours, I mean like some kind of time, I'm not saying within a half an hour, an hour, but like if we said something like we would expect, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Okay.
It's just.
Yeah, that's, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, next time.
Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. All right, moved, discussing impossible action regarding village administrator slash economic development and tourism director recruitment process, what you have here is you had the original timeline. Bill came up with recommendations to make some modifications to even condense this a little bit more and it makes a little bit more sense, so Bill, you want to just go over the few changes that you made to this timeline?
Yeah, so I'll just give a high level overview and the reasons for it now, understand that it's so flexible, I didn't receive any comments back from anyone between the last meeting and now, and so again, this is, this is currently proposed, for the most part, for the sake of the board, I'll go ahead and kind of go through all of it because some of them are here.
Absolutely.
So currently we are accepting applications for the village administrator and economic development and tourism director position that will go through January 20th and the recruitment process will end at midnight on the 20th. Thereafter, it's proposed that staff and the village president will do a paper screening of candidates. We'll try to narrow that down to a recommended 10 to then present to the village board at its January 24th meeting. At the January 24th meeting, the board will decide on which 10 candidates and if there are five, then then we'll proceed to a single round instead of two rounds, but then once those 10 candidates are decided, staff will move forward to inviting those candidates in for an inner first round interview. And that's still to be decided at this point. Some of the options that we have listed here are for the candidates to submit a video presentation or to actually sit in interviews with a select group of people. Again, should be decided sooner rather than later so that we can get questions prepared and get the schedule prepared. Once that initial round of interviews conducted, then the results will then again be provided to the village board meeting, this is a change from the previous. We had suggested February 15th at the last meeting, we've moved this up to February 8th, we think that we can, can do this within that small frame of time between the January 24th meeting and the 8th is to get you a list to dial down from the first round to your finalists. Thereafter, that's when background checks will, will start and in talking with the chief. That makes sense, it'll give, it'll give him more time to conduct the background information. And then we'll invite the finalists in for the final interview. Now, this is again a suggested change in hopes of finding a timeline and a schedule that would fit with staff. I believe in the previous schedule, it had the final interview on a Saturday, which means the staff would have to come in on that Saturday. This is a compromise, so this would, would be on a Tuesday afternoon slash evening and again up to discussion with the village board to see if you can attend, starting at three o'clock. Under this model, it would suggest three finalists and then we will shift them through the staff interview, the village board interview, and then a tourist slash writing sample. One thing to be cognizant about this is we are the last candidate here, the last time slot is, is between five and six. So depending on daylight, the tour may not make sense this late in the evening. Then we would have the opportunity at the February 28th village board meeting to, to finish any unfinished business and finalize any, any acceptance. Very aggressive schedule. And so again, open to any changes, just a quick update in regards to candidates, right now we do have 12 applications submitted. And so we'll continue to go to that processes screen to see if those candidates are qualified candidates. And then, do you want me to jump to the next?
No, let's just stick on, unless it's related to the time you're talking about the, the scoring sheet, no, let's just hold off on it, so we'd like comments on what people's feelings are on this timeline. Go ahead, Judy.
I'm sorry, my last meeting, guys, so you must have talked about it then, so my questions you probably already answered, but where it says staff will reduce the number of candidates, what staff and like who, can you explain that one?
Yeah, so at the last, the village hired me, all the department heads were involved in that, including the consultants. So they were a part of the first round interview. Well, excuse me, not the first round interview, they were involved with the first round of screening, and so I think there was aerobics.
Right, no, I, I think, can I just interrupt, I think she's talking, you're talking about, it's actually the village board at, if you're talking about January 24th?
Or no, January 20th, staff will reduce the number of candidates to the number of 10.
So, okay, that would, no, that would be Bill, myself, and I think it's Mike.
So that can be whoever you want it to be.
Yeah.
But basically that's taking it from all the submittals down to 10 that we will, will then present as the highest qualified candidates to the village board, you know, those board then takes that down to like eight or seven.
Because the last one, like you said, we had a consultant, this time we won't have a consultant, if I understand this.
Yep.
Well, no, well, last, we didn't have a consultant the last time.
Yeah, no, last time it was done internally. And when I say consultants, I'm talking about like the planner, the engineer, and the attorney.
Oh, those were used the last time though, right?
Right, can, can, so that makes sense, when we talk about staff, we're talking about department heads and our head of our consults or our attorney, our engineer, and our planner, that's part of what's considered staff when you get to the February round one interviews. When you're talking about the January 1 through the 20th, that's basically getting everybody, we'll talk about the scoring sheet. We're going to eliminate people who don't meet the minimum requirements and then we score using that score sheet and we'll take the top 10 of those, do a summary, present them to the board, and then the board narrows them down that get into the first round of interviews.
So on the January 1st to 20th, it says staff, that's the attorney and planner also?
No, that staff would be a much smaller group, it's just going through the, yeah, that would be just going through the score sheet.
I asked that same question last time, we need to spell that out, I would be much more comfortable we spell out school staff is any time, and if it's going to include you, Jay, you're not staff, so it's got to say that department heads and president.
I think the original timeline had that defined.
No, it didn't, I asked last week or last meeting about which ones were defined, there was times where it was sometimes you and sometimes actual staff and sometimes different staff, so it's fine, we're just, let's define it.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you.
And, okay, so sorry, maybe so.
No, no, that's fine.
We're trying to figure it out.
Reduce number down to, and the way you're going to reduce it is by just scoring, not by actually medium off, you're not.
No, it's a paper screening, it's the paper screening that eliminates people who don't make minimum requirements. And if we have 20 people yet, we got to get to the top 10, it would be taking the top scoring, the top 10 that scored. And we're going to have an opportunity to look at that score sheet.
The board.
Yeah, or tonight even, yeah.
Right, right, I mean, but we won't see that, like, but if there's 13 people, the board won't see who those 13 people are, just the department heads and Jay are going to get it down to 10.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just.
No, no, correct. All right, Andy?
Yeah, and then the, my question segueing from there is, once we have it narrowed down to 10 candidates, you said the board is going to get a summary on those candidates, will we actually get access to their applications and?
Yep, okay, yep, and the score sheet, you'll have everything we can get for you. Bill?
Just real quick, I did check and there is daylight till about 6:15, 6:20. I'm just saying, so, I mean, you could always move the tour and writing sample for candidate three up to two o'clock, but I don't think you'll need to, I think it'll be played, unless it's storming.
I, I think we're fine because what we're going to show them, they can see where they're lit up, I mean, I'm not too worried about the tour part of it, it's more if people can make those times.
And then the other thing I had was the first round interviews.
February 1st to the 4th.
The first to the fourth.
Yep.
Couldn't you do those by Zoom?
Yeah, we could do that.
Rather than bringing people in?
Well, we can, I, I always think it's better to talk to someone face to face, but yes, if they huh, yeah, if they can't make it or it's more, yes, we're, I think we can be flexible on that.
Yeah, if you got people out of state that are coming in.
Yep, understood.
Yeah.
No, I, I'm flexible on that, like I say, I, I don't want to make it automatic, I think it's sometimes better to actually you, you get much better interaction when you're in person.
Right, I, I'm not, I mean, so I don't know what you mean by our candidates will submit a video presentation.
No, that's what they did last time, candidates had to submit this video and everybody watched the video. That's why there's an or, I, my preference, I put them both in here, my preference was we just conduct the interview.
I would just say, conduct interviews.
Is everybody comfortable that I'll move that?
Yeah.
I just put it in because that was what the process was last time, so.
I was thinking, did I conduct in person or Zoom?
Okay, yep, I'm good with that, absolutely. Anything else?
It doesn't give a number, but we have 10, we'll narrow it down to some number less than 10 presumably for interviews.
Five or less? Five or less?
Uh, no.
Well, you, yeah, well, you want you, for, for the initial round, I think you probably want more than five.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, no, it'd be 10 or less, and if we have five or less, then we skip.
Yeah, so we could choose 10, we could choose five.
Yep, yep, yep.
So, so, just, so I know here, so going back to that point on, on the initial screening of applicants, where we say staff, who should be a part of that?
Go ahead, guys, who do you want on that to do the paper screening?
Consistence, so I would say department heads, I don't think we need attorneys and everybody.
No, okay.
So I would say department heads.
And Jay, and then just stay, because lines seem to be the same, department heads and Jay.
All right.
So which date are we on?
We're just talking about the initial paper screening.
Oh, January 1st to 20th, right, that staff is just department heads and Jay, yeah.
And then where it says staff will reuse them, but the department has them, Jay.
Yeah.
Uh, we've probably talked about this under scoring too when the sheet comes, but I've been wondering, is, are you also going to score your own in an average? Or are you all going to try to come to an agreement on what scores?
No, I personally think the cleanest way is everybody scores, you add up the total score.
Okay.
So if there's six of us and the total possible is 20 points, I'm just making this up, maximum score would be 120.
Okay. And then presumably, the top 10 based on score alone, so it's not really like you're the, the staff doesn't really reduce the number, you're just scoring and then the top 10 go on.
Right, right, I agree, but we're already finding some that are, that put in, that don't meet the minimum requirement. So you don't need to score, you know, some are going to be eliminated because we used indeed and sometimes you get.
That's helpful, all right, thank you.
Yep. Anything else on this, are we kind of comfortable with that? And does that time work for everybody? I know it's cutting it, for those who are, well, I'm more worried about the three o'clock and people get off, you know, some of us are retired, so three o'clock doesn't matter, but the people who actually work, is that a feasible time for you?
I just planned on taking PTO that day, or half the day.
Okay.
Just available.
Okay, I have a different, I know that you did this, so staff couldn't come in, but what if the applicant can't make it on a Tuesday because they have a job that they're currently at? Well, how do you deal with the situation because?
They're applying for a job, they're going to have to figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, and we would let, so, so when we first respond to the first round candidates, we'll disclose what the schedule is and so that they can plan for that.
Okay, I was just, no, no, you, that's a very good point. I mean, Bill, the last time, he had to drive down from where he lived and it was on a Saturday and.
Well, that, I kind of tried to copy as much as what you did the last time, so that's where some of this came in. I agree with Bill that for staff and first people in evening is sometimes easier than taking the day off for a Saturday, Andy, does that work for you?
Yeah, I can make that work, I was just looking at the candidates.
Okay.
All right, I actually appreciate that coming in on a Saturday.
Well, that's, that's kind of what Bill thought, so, like I say, I'm very flexible on this, so it's really up to, you know, what the majority wants. All right.
Just one more.
Okay.
So this timeline here, the, the interview schedule assumes three final candidates. On February 8th, I am here, shows three to five finalists, just understand that if, at the at the February 8th meeting, if you do decide to choose up to five finalists, that you'll have to amend your.
Well, that, but can I be honest, if we have four candidates, an hour is an awful long time, I think you could cut that to 40, 45 minutes, then you can get four people in the same time period.
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to note that so that you understand for, for those that are taking time off.
Right.
And then just for clarification, on the February 1st through the 4th, when it says village staff and village president, this staff includes the attorneys the second time it's in here?
Yeah, and I'm not, yes.
That's the attorney, planner, et cetera?
They've been invited.
Right, okay.
All right, any others on this, otherwise, can I have a motion to adopt this with the stated changes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed new time, what's the changes that we talked about tonight?
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. We put this future agenda item on here.
Awesome, oh, we're going to go back.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we're at the scoring sheet. So you saw that the last meeting, this is very similar to it, but what Bill thought was more is to keep it simple, we just do one point for everything, so technically if someone has a master's, they also have a bachelor, so you give one point for the bachelor, one point for the master. Someone with just a bachelor would just get the one point for the bachelor's degree. For experience, if someone, let's say, had 13 years of experience, they get one point for the five to seven, one point for the eight to 10, and one point for the 11 plus, just so everybody is going down and we should be pretty consistent on the scoring then. Does everybody understand that, or do you have any questions or anything, yeah, Kevin?
I just, you still one points for experience working with legislative leaders, directions, you know, all those are going to be one points down there.
Yes, everything is just one point.
So really essentially, you all should be scoring that top portion with exactly the same.
Yeah, I would think.
Uh, but I do sense that there are going to be areas in one through five that I hope you all find differences in, in scoring differently because of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's exactly how it should work out. I think there might be some difference in what we consider, you know, experience with contract negotiations, I mean, I, you know, if they put in there, negotiated a police contract, that's one thing. You know, something else being, well, there was, when I was doing this, they did negotiate, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So there might be a little differences, but you're right, I would imagine we'll be all pretty close on there. Bill?
I'm really good until I got to the one to three years experience with zoning codes, or five with zoning codes. I, I, I get it, but that's such a big part of this job. I think that I would almost want to wait, I mean, I, I would almost want to wait that a little bit more.
Well, then, if you want to, in this system, if you want to wait, because if you looked under the original, they were all waited.
Right, right.
Which you would want to do is one year of experience, two to three years of experience.
I would be more comfortable with that, yeah.
To add a few more categories so you get more points.
Yep.
And then maybe go four to five and then six plus.
Yeah. Yeah, that's such a big part of what this job does.
But that's how, if you want something to wait more, that's the way how this one would work to do it. All right, anybody else? No, I like, yeah, I'm not feeling super strong about any changes to this. Okay. All right, okay, Bill.
Just a clarification here on the other experiences and skills at the bottom, are we limiting it to five or do you keep going?
I, I limited it to five, I mean, otherwise we can get a little too carried away.
Can you repeat that?
What he's saying is, should we keep, should we limit it to five or keep going on and on?
Because my only other thing was for supervising, we only give like one to three for supervising and then four plus years. I mean, I think the more years you supervise, should we work more than just 40 results, that one we might want to add one more.
Well, that was because of, well, I guess we could do that.
And, and again, so this is a, this is a scoring to qualify them for the first round interview.
Right, no, no, I get it, no, it's what we did it, but supervising is a big thing.
So would you add like four to five and then six plus?
Sure, and then four to six and six plus, yeah.
Can we do that?
Seven plus.
Or seven plus, sorry.
No, it's four to five, you said, right?
Yeah.
If it's four to five, then it would be six plus. All right, we're good. And I have a, a motion on accepting this what we call application score sheet with the recommended changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised village administrator classification score sheet with the changes we talked about tonight.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second discussion, Kevin.
Thanks, Jay.
Yep.
Just looking at it, I feel, I mean, I like that, and I like empirical evidence, I like to be pretty succinct, but I also feel like there's some of these are going to come with things you can't score easily, ones and zeros, and so I just, I'd maybe make a note at the bottom, like notes, different staff may have a note, so what board sees it, we're going to see a, a total, right, so instead of 111, it's just going to be like everybody scored in the total score, be a summary sheet, right?
Right, right.
So at the bottom, I guess I'd like to see summary notes on, on the folks too.
But now remember, the top ones, you're going to see their whole.
The application.
The whole application.
But I, but if, but if I see the application and let's say Mike, sorry, Mike, you're here, or Bobby, you know, they see something and they want to write it in.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So I just want to see what their opinions are of the person.
So I guess a comment section.
Yeah, comments.
And, and remember, we have to remember, we're just getting the cover sheet or the resumes and the way they're teaching it now, those are all like on one sheet of paper. So it's not like there's going to be a profound amount of information on these.
Well, more important that someone.
Right.
One of the, the staff leads knows this person has experience.
Right, all right, can you add that then?
We can add that, yeah.
Okay, very good, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So move, all right, future agenda items, the reason we put this on is because there's been a Future agenda items, the reason we put this on is because there's been a kind of a minor crisis that has come up. So this will be on the February eighth meeting, even though that's dedicated to the. Village administrator, we're going to need to address this, this will be going to plan. On the Monday, February seventh, I'll let Bill do a quick summary on why we're where we are right now.
Yeah, so this pertains specifically to the the single residential five district. In that the bulk standards in that district requires a minimum of sixty foot wide lots. At sixty foot wide lots, there is also a a performance standard of attached garages. That need to be for at maximum forty percent of the front facade facing the front street. And so what that does is that a minimal lot in the R five district that gives you eighteen foot wide garage. The conflict there is that the standard double garage doors are at sixteen feet. That allows you for one foot on each side, which is a very small garage. Building code requires for at least two feet on the on each side of the garage door. So that you can open and get in and get out, there is although an exception to that, that says that if there is. The proper header, you can have an eighteen foot wide garage, so technically, our code is, can be applicable. You can still build eighteen foot garages in a a standard lot, however, it's not practicable. And so we've heard complaints from both scenic valley and crossing on this issue. And so this is something that we've identified early on, I think in November, we brought it to plan commission for discussion in December. There, the the concern wasn't necessarily on the R five or R four districts. The concerns were more in the R three, R two, and R one, where the width of those lots could be a lot larger. And therefore could have larger. Percentage with. And so, plan commission at that point. Had recommended looking at fifty percent garage store ratios, which would resolve the current issue. And potentially looking at being specific per zoning district. And so those are the options that will be coming. We did set up again, like Jay said, the public hearing, since it is a zoning code amendment, to go to public hearing on February seventh. And then the village board would be able to take action anytime thereafter.
So I know, just kind of, I just wanted to give you a heads up on, while we're having that special meeting for the village administrator. That needs to be done. Yeah, 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 we're not going to discuss it, but you can certainly go one way.
Can we just have a minimum garage size? Or or say that in that particular application, you could just have an eighteen foot, two on each foot on side, just, you know. Not change forty percent at all, but just allow for a minimum size. You know, sort of whichever is whichever is smaller, I guess, in that case. Because I do worry about just blanketing fifty percent or forty percent to your zone, I'd like the idea of forty percent. So I'm just wondering if you could look and see if, see if that's legal or if that's possible.
Alrighty.
I'll be drafting the memorandum.
Can, can I have a motion to go into closed session? Oh, I'm sorry.
At the February meeting, February twenty fourth meeting, whatever it is. I would really like to talk to to the bills board and if public comes in about giving this body a raise.
Okay.
Rather than a hundred dollars a month, I I I'm not giving a number, but I think it we, it needs to be higher. And I'll I'll talk about it at our next meeting where it becomes on the agenda, but I would like it on the agenda so we can talk about.
Okay, we can do that, but I would ask you to look into state statute. There's a statute that addresses that, so we got to make sure we're in line with that, because I'm pretty sure. Because in one of the municipality magazines, they talked about that that a board can't give themselves a raise. They can do something for a future board.
And I'm saying.
I just want to let you, if we could.
Right, and I'll.
That'll help.
I'll talk about the future board starting in April, that is a future board.
Well, just look, I I would ask, when you bring that up, at least look at state statute on what the limitations are, so we don't pass something that's in violation.
Yep, we'll do.
Okay.
Make a motion to go to closed session.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Calvater.
Yes.
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 Trustee Herman.
Yes. You know, we got to get, too bad you're not rea- running, because we could have you as master of, the sergeant of arms, or whatever they call that. Let us know when you're, we're back on.
Okay, yeah, we are on and we are recording.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to. Hire Mr. Exxon as the interim village administrator for the terms. Set out in his proposal.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion, would you like that in a resolution?
Sure.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of what document.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were going to do, okay, thank you.
Yeah, a simple resolution would be, it sounds like, so anything in writing, I want.
Okay. And I have authorization to sign it.
And President Langfeld has authorization to sign it.
Very good, all right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same, thank you, congratulations, Michael. All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session number two? I have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in closed session, we have to close both doors. Hang on a sec here, we're all, we're an open session, do I have a motion for adjournment? Oh. Did I miss something?
Yeah, don't you have a motion?
No, we weren't going to take any action, he's just going to. Didn't we already do that when we came out?
No, that was, we did these two, those two in the last.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, you're right, oh, boy, all right. Go ahead, Kevin, I'm going to let you do this.
I will make a motion to move forward with the. Negotiation process on acquiring land by the village. After the minor adjustments are made to the option.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same, thank you for that correction. All right. Now, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. All all opposed, same, thank you very much for coming, it's a cold one, stay warm, everybody.